This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the April 17, 2023 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. A little different meeting tonight format, we're going to have a public hearing. But one tradition I don't like to put by the wayside is the pleasurable ease it. So would you all help me?
Pleasure. Our pleasurable allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Before you, you have an amended agenda with the compressed public hearing script. That's the only thing that's changed.
Okay, and that's the script you gave me earlier. Okay, good. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda. Right?
I'll go to accept it.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner's just walking in, motion carried.
I'm in this everything.
A London Bridge.
Okay. We're going to have a public hearing this evening of UGB 23-01/CPMA 23-01/CPTA 23-01. We'll call the meeting to order. Order of hearing, disclosure statement, staff report, public testimony, and we'll close the hearing. The planning commissioner will deliberate first, they're with us this evening. And so I'll just turn it over to Jeff Goodman, and he can start opening up the meeting.
Okay, this public hearing is now open at 7:04 for the purpose of considering an earth boundary adjustment, comprehensive plan map amendment, and comprehensive plan text amendment, file number UGB 23-01, CPMA 23-01, and CPTA 23-01.
Thank you, Jeff. Public hearing is now open at 7:05 PM for the purpose of considering a UGB agreement adjustment, comprehensive plan map amendment, and comprehensive plan text amendment, file number UGB 23-01, CPMA 23-01, and CPTA 23-01. The procedure I would like to follow tonight is in this manner. Read the disclosure statement, hear the staff report, hear public testimony, close the hearing, planning commission deliberation, planning commission decision, city council deliberation, and city council decision.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing of, what is it, April 17, 2023, to order. My name is Jeff Goodman. I am the chair of the planning commission for Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make legislative decisions about land use matters in Vernonia. The item before us tonight is a legislative item. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of every hearing, I will ask the members of the planning commission whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the commissioner in question believes he or she is without actual bias, or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing, and copies of the staff reports are available upon request. And any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. It is also important that you make your best case to the planning commission, because although all of our decisions are subject to appeal, any such appeal will be heard by the Land Use Board of Appeals, and they will decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. Please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question, and please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be part of the record. Any questions? That concludes the introduction. Does any planning commissioner wish to declare any potential conflict of interest?
Aye. So I have a family member who owns property within the proposed changes. I have no interest in that property, and I own property in another location. And I have no agenda, no biases.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we ask if anybody wishes to challenge that?
You can ask if anybody would like to challenge her right to hear this item before the agenda, but I did consult with the attorney today, and there is no potential or actual conflict of interest.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll skip that. Anybody else? Then Mayor Hobart, you may continue.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing of April 17, 2023, to order. My name is Rick Hobart. I am the chairman of the city council for Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make legislative decisions about land use matters in Vernonia. The item before us tonight is a legislative item. Members of the city council are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the members of the city council whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the council member in question believes he or she is without actual bias, or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing, and the copies of the staff reports are available upon request. Any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. It is also important that you make your best case to the city council, because although all of the decisions are subject to appeal, any such appeal will be heard by the Land Use Board of Appeals. And they will decide the appeals based solely on the evidence in the record before us. Please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be a part of the record. Are there any questions? If not, that concludes the introduction. Does any city council wish to declare any potential conflict of interest? Doesn't appear to be any. Then would the staff please proceed with a summary of their written report?
Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Coffey, and I'm with the Department of Planning. And here are colleagues, Jesse's back there. And we're going to present the staff report to you in a summarized manner. You have the full staff report before you, and we're going to go over the main points of what we're proposing tonight. And we're going to show a slideshow on that screen back there, so I might reference that. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to crane your head a little bit to get access to it. Sorry. So the council contracted with us to look at this UGB amendment or swap. And UGB stands for urban growth boundary. I'm going to be using that acronym a lot tonight. So UGB is urban growth boundary. So you can go to the next slide. We're going to do this presentation and summarize what's in the staff report. And counselors and commissioners, you can stop me at any point if you have questions throughout the presentation. And we'll also have time for questions at the end. So move along. So the gist of what we're proposing tonight is changing the urban growth boundary for the city of Vernonia. And from the get-go, I want to distinguish the urban growth boundary from the city limits. What we're talking about tonight is the urban growth boundary, not the city limits. We're not proposing annexation just to change what could be annexed in the future if property owners chose to. So the UGB amendment that we're discussing is to bring in this pink area, what we're going to call the boot, bring it into the urban growth boundary because it makes a lot of sense for residential development. It's really close to the school, and it can be provided with public utilities in a way that makes a lot of sense. And as you can see, it's surrounded on almost all sides by the existing urban growth boundary and the existing city limits. And so if this property or this area came into the urban growth boundary, property owners would then be able to apply for annexation if they so chose. But that would be a separate process deliberated at a certain point. So also, or we can stay on this slide for a minute. And then also, as a part of this adjustment or swap, we're proposing to remove these three areas from the urban growth boundary. So there's the timber property, the store property in the south there, and then the Haylen Highway area. And all of these areas have a residential plan designation, but for various reasons are not very suitable for residential development. The timber property is used as a timber resource. The store property is almost entirely, or it is entirely in the floodplain. And then the Haylen Highway area does have residential development, but it has topographical issues that make extension of public facilities quite difficult. So those three areas are proposed for removal from the urban growth boundary, and we're proposing to add the boot to the urban growth boundary. So you can move along. The proposed amendments we have here tonight are a comprehensive plan map amendment that would change that urban growth boundary and assign the boot area a residential plan designation. So that wouldn't change its zoning yet. Its zoning would change upon annexation if property is applied for that. And then the same comprehensive plan map amendment would remove those three properties from the urban growth boundary. And then as a part of this, we wanted to make sure that once annexation happened, if annexation happens, that it'll happen in an efficient manner. And so we're proposing a text amendment tonight as well. You can go to the next slide. And this is the proposed text amendment. And it basically says, we're bringing in the boot. We're going to assign it a residential plan designation so that upon annexation, it would be zoned residential. And then we want to make sure that if a property owner wants to apply for annexation, they will develop their property or show that they can develop their property in a way where it doesn't do public facility extensions and street extensions in a way that blocks things. We want the grid system to be extended efficiently and not have weird connections that make it difficult for other property owners to develop in the future. And so, and if you'll go to the next slide, we'll include a map that shows how public facilities could be extended. And with this text amendment, this isn't prescriptive. You wouldn't have to extend public facilities or put streets in this way, but this is a map that shows how they could be, and the public facilities engineers recommended something like this. So just to reiterate, the applications for annexation would just have to show that they're developing in a way that doesn't block the street system, extension of public facilities. And that's what this text amendment is about. It doesn't have to exactly match this map. So now I'm going to get a little bit into the analysis that we had to do for this UGB adjustment or swap. So the state has a really prescribed way that UGBs are changed. And so we have to do quite a bit of analysis to show that this proposal makes sense. And thankfully, it does. And so I'll kind of quickly go through this, but all of it is detailed much more extensively in the staff report as well. So we can go to the next slide. So we had to establish a study area and look at the land that we could be bringing into the UGB. And what the state really cares about here is they don't want farm and forestry land brought in before what is considered exception land or residential land. And so thankfully, there's a lot of residential land around the Vernonia urban growth boundary, so you could just look at the different residential areas and compare them. Maybe go to the next slide. We divided these potential areas into sub-areas and then analyzed them to see which one of them would make the most sense to bring into the Vernonia urban growth boundary. And there's a whole process for prioritizing these. You can go to the next slide. And so the school, 14, and the education centers. And basically, what this is asking is, yeah, what makes the most sense, especially in terms of extension of public facilities and reducing conflict between agriculture and forest land and urban areas. And obviously, the boot area out of all of these sub-areas makes the most sense. It's surrounded on three sides of the urban growth boundary. We've shown that extension of public facilities can make a lot of sense here, and that it's providing the residential land that Vernonia needs. And let's see, next slide. The other aspect that the state wants to see with this urban growth boundary adjustment is that we're keeping the same amount of residential land in Vernonia. And that's why we're proposing an urban growth boundary adjustment and not an urban growth boundary expansion. Expansion process is different, and we probably wouldn't be able to do it because it depends on land you need. So it's determined that Vernonia has enough residential land, but we just want more suitable land. So the gist of this table is that we're taking about, we're taking out about the same amount of land that we're bringing into the urban growth boundary. And we're taking out residentially designated land, and we're bringing in residentially designated land. And that's what the state wants to see. They want to see this substantial equivalency. And I'll also say that with all of this analysis, we've talked to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the OCD, which is the statewide planning agency. And they've confirmed our analysis and approach, and this makes a lot of sense to them. And so it's great to have their support in this. And we've also talked to Thousand Friends, which is a land use watchdog. And they also support this. I think you have a letter of support from them in front of you. And it's really amazing to see the service of work from these two organizations in particular, because there's a lot of UGB adjustments and expansions that they are not as thrilled about. But this one, I think, makes a ton of sense, and we've done good analysis to show why. So we go to the next slide. So the proposed zoning, like I said before, we're not changing any zoning today. Zoning changes come with annexations, but we are removing some areas from the UGB. We've coordinated with Columbia County to make sure that this makes sense to them, too. And that's key because Columbia County will also have to adopt this UGB settlement by ordinance as well. So we've talked to them, they agree with the approach, and that's good. And so you can see in here, this shows what the new urban growth boundary would be. And the boot area has this dashed orange line, which means that it has residential plan designation. And then the three properties, the timber property, the store property, and then the Haylen Highway area, they already have county zoning because they're already outside of the city limits, and they would keep that county zoning. And what's cool about this adjustment is that it provides resource land, like timberland, back to the county where it can be protected, and it makes a lot of sense. And here's the next slide. So the staff report includes all these findings that we need to have for comprehensive plan text amendments and map amendments. And that's compliance with the statewide planning goals, consistency with the Vernonia comprehensive plan. There's the consistency with the urban growth management agreement, which is the agreement between Columbia County and Vernonia. And then a very important piece of this is the public facilities analysis, making sure that public facilities can be extended to the boot and make sense. So all of those findings are detailed more extensively in the staff report. And yeah. So that was a very quick run-through of some complicated processes. And I can see any questions you have now, and we can go back to different slides if you like.
Wait a minute. Did it go through together? Do we have any questions?
I guess I would have a question. Do any of the proposed roads up there, do they interfere with any of the current structures that are on the land already, or?
Where we, so those roads that we showed certainly wouldn't need to be structured that way. If the development proposal could show how they are extended in another phase. But I think in all of the ones that we showed in the illustrative map, there are long block lines for petition lines. And so the public facilities, or the engineers gave us input for.
So once it goes through, then the county is going to enforce, to begin with, people not building where those proposed roads could go? Is that how that would work?
People could still build where those proposed roads could go. Yeah. Right now, before annexation, the county would retain all of the, it's still in the county zone. And so they can, you'd be able to do whatever you could do before on those properties.
I have a question. So you talked about the annexation. And so people have a choice if they want to be as part of the, to be annexed into the city? Or what if, what if you don't want to be annexed?
Yeah, generally, annexation happens when property owners petition for annexation. There's technically a process where it could be forced upon somebody. It takes a very long and difficult process, and I don't think it's anything that the city of Vernonia would intend to do, is my understanding. And it takes like a vote. Jesse can maybe speak more specifically to that.
Yeah, I mean, if the city wanted to hold a vote, citywide to do an annexation there, they could do that. But this is not something that's, so I wouldn't anticipate it here or anywhere else I could work to announce.
Yeah. Yeah, so in practice, it's basically when a property owner wants to bring their property in, it's petition for them.
So they could keep being annexed indefinitely?
They could retain the county zone, and yeah.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay. Any questions from the city council?
Do we need to mention the island?
Oh, that's a good point. Yes, in the staff report, and there is this tiny little property that, so the UGB was changed, I think, 11 years ago, when the school was moved to this area. And in that process, just by mistake, there was this tiny little fortune of land that was left outside of the urban growth boundary. And I know Columbia County has requested that we bring it in to the urban growth boundary as a part of this process. So it's very tiny. It's bounded on both sides by the urban growth boundary. And it's shown in the staff report in more detail of exactly where it is. But yeah, there's this tiny little thing that we're adding on to this. It's kind of a critical mistake that should be cleaned up.
Any other questions?
I got one. I'd still, I guess, need a little bit more clearer about the county allowing them to build. Say somebody lets somebody build close by the school, and then somebody in the middle wants to annex into the city. And as well as our water and sewer utilities, how are we going to deal with them? So we're not stuck in a pickle because?
To have this piecemeal.
Yes.
Bringing it in. So as a part of annexation, a big property owner will come with a development plan that shows how public facilities could be extended to serve a property. And yeah, it might include sometimes an extension of a road that couldn't be looped around yet. And that's, probably this has to be a possibility because it's by the property owner's election. But you can see around the boot, there's, the street grid is there. And so there's a number of opportunities from the different directions that the street grid could be extended.
The city can also choose to not annex a property at a certain time. I mean, it's, you want to be sure that public facilities can serve a property. And so that's upon the property underfeared, if they're not continuous resistance services. How does that work? If it doesn't work, then they won't be able to be annexed at that time until they can figure out how it can work to be served for the public service. So.
Well, we're usually getting faced with, they want to stay in the county, but they want all of our facilities.
So that's, that's not all.
Okay.
How are the, how are they being serviced right now? Are they like on?
They all got on the public facilities before the council closed the option for people outside of the city limits to connect. So these properties also are served by public infrastructure.
Could you talk a little bit about the positive aspects of the boot and the utilities? And the thing I noticed when I read the report, which is a good aspect of it, is the, a new line of direction for the wastewater into the Haylen River, which would take quite a bit of pressure off Louisiana. Could you just?
Maybe not in as much detail as you might want, but the public facilities report does detail all of the potential benefits of adding the boot. And part of that is closing some of these wastewater lines. And yeah, let's see. Yeah, the public facilities report has a lot more detail on this. But basically, when it's surrounded on all sides of the UGB, you can connect public facilities in more efficient ways. And the topography of this area allows for a lot of that connection, whereas like in the southwest part of the city where we're taking out, you can't really extend sewer out there unless you do pumping and that sort of thing. So the engineer was very clear that this area could easily be served by public facilities. And additionally, with having streets in this area, it makes access to the schools and elsewhere in Vernonia much more viable and walkable.
Also, there was advantage for the water at the, for the school district?
I don't know if it said specifically for the school district, but I can look.
It's okay. Just trying to look at the positives.
Yeah, yeah. The engineer gave us great feedback in terms of the feasibility of this. And a lot of the findings that the state cares about is that extension of public facilities is viable and makes sense.
Okay, any other questions from the city council? If not, now is the time to open up for public testimony? Does any member of the public wish to speak or present testimony on this agenda item? So I'll go with first raised hand, and you can step to the dais.
I'm from the Norman, I own property here in Brnonia. I have a couple of questions to start it off with. I'd like to know how much we paid this organization to do this stuff?
You should have asked me that.
Sorry. I didn't know about this meeting until last week.
Without the, without the application fee. It's, we did this work in $8,000.
Yeah. How much money have we spent for building a new water storage facility for our drinking water?
So in my time, we haven't spent any because there is, we're currently updating the water master plan. So that'll tell us the next, like, 20 years in the state.
How many years in a row running have we been put on water curtailments?
So we're, we're on water curtailment because of fish, not because we have a lack, a lack of water coming down the river. So we don't eat into our water right. It's the fish needing the water, or if we're out needing the water that the state wanted to be purged out.
Right, but if we had more storage facility for water, we could store more water in the wintertime when you don't have to worry about that. And then we wouldn't be put on water curtailment in the summertime.
Well, I think we'd help, I think we'd still end up on water curtailment by their standard.
Right, but we would have more storage to where it's on drastic.
Right, we could probably change the steps. The cubic feet per second is what the state currently uses, right? So we could lessen how quickly those severity degrees are and how quickly we go under curtailment for the fish, but yeah.
Yeah, because we pull our water out of the river still. When was the last time that our wa, water, drinking water treatment facility was updated?
So, well, it was built in the 80s. It's been updated in different little measures throughout time. So we've done different valve lines for pouring treatment, all that kind of stuff. But not a massive update since it was still functioning. And we're currently not hitting the production number that that plant can make in usage per day, if that makes sense.
We don't have to. Yeah, we haven't exceeded its workability.
Yes.
So the, the studies that have been done on your guys' map stuff, nothing against you guys, so if I come off as aggressive, I've been in the construction industry for 19 years. I've been in your shoes on proposals. Did you guys go walk that land before doing the paperwork? Were you aware that those proposed roads that you're pushing through are private property with easements?
Yeah.
Could you check with landowners if that would be good? Because we already have another development that's going on, and everyone accesses their houses through private property. At any point in time, so if you put a fence up, put a pole, and say, hey, $700 a year, you can go to your house.
So those roads that they are diagramming are, should that property owner want development? We want them to hook up as close to the grid as possible in the, what already exists. That's all that says.
Right, but what's going to keep them from the, the family that owns Texas Avenue right now? Do they have any rights to say, sorry, I don't want them to develop past me?
They'd have, the person bringing in the development would have to bring a development plan that incorporates roads they actually have agreements to. They couldn't make some, they couldn't make Texas become a public road without the buy-in of the property owner.
And that's not on the city to handle that. That's on the pub, the private people dealing with other private people.
If they came with their development and it went down their road, and they didn't, they said no, then they'd have to find another way or not develop at all. Then we wouldn't annex them in because they don't have a workable developmental plan.
Have those property owners been contacted and asked, hey, would you be willing to let other people gain access to this before this all?
No, because short of the property owner at the time, it could be a totally different property owner. So ahead of develop, we were not anticipating anyone in the boot was going to be interested in annexing. We're just trying to solve a problem that existed with the other parcels and leave them with options for the future.
For the land that's in the new boot, I tried to buy 11.62 acres of it, three and a half years ago. It was deemed not buildable, wetlands, and wasn't even approved for except. I was not allowed to tie into city water unless I put in an entire pump facility for my sewer that anyone else could then tie into above that. So for, you guys only know what you know. So it's a fat lie that those people are already, those houses and that property is already tied into public facilities because that's not the case. There's 11 acres there that's completely wetlands. If you walk the land and you know anything about vegetation and what grows on what type of soil and land, you would know right away those are wetlands. Because all the vegetation that grows up there is the same stuff that's turned along the rivers.
I didn't say that all the property was. I said the current homes were.
Current homes.
Yeah.
But there is homes in there that have septic, septic tanks. They, and they're not tied into the city sewer.
And they're current users of septic? Or they're just a home with a septic?
Yes, there's homes up there that are lived in using septic.
That's new to us because we only thought we had one more septic in the city.
No, you have way more than one more, one septic in the city.
Well, not that the county would require if they're within 350 feet to connect public infrastructure. That's maybe why we only know we have one. Because people don't want to connect. Just saying.
So does that land then become automatically buildable? And what, what do we benefit? Because I know we're not, we're taken from the sword place with this flood plain, which obviously doesn't make a difference because we're building all those new homes in downtown Brnonia, all those homes that were taken for FEMA. And now we're putting manufactured homes on funky foundations. We have one septic built, there, what is it? A Street.
Yeah.
We got three streets, three houses going in there in a flood zone. So why would we take that away from that if it's not buildable? We're still building when that is, it has literally been deemed wetlands up there. So to me, it doesn't make sense to move that. It's like the school right now, where it's built, I was contacted by the person that ran the building of the school, the super parent that ran the whole project, a couple of years ago and said, hey, we're going to litigation because there's issues with the concrete. What can you tell me about that land? What I could tell you was, when I was a kid, we would go up there, we would dig six inches down and hit the water table. It was wetlands and it was ball fields for a reason. And now we built the school there. The school's sinking. The walls are cracking. The windows are blowing out. The softball field, we've had two games this whole season because it's flooded. It's wet. The amount of natural springs that are up there is insane. If only we could figure out how to utilize all that fresh spring water and bottle it, and we could put Brnonia on the map. But it is incredible the amount of water that is on that hill. I mean, I'm off of Weed Avenue, and I found three springs on my property. My house sank two inches in a year. So I'm drier than it is up there. So how do we, how can we justify bringing this into the urban growth boundary when it's not buildable? Like, what, what does the city benefit from that? Is there not another direction we can go with other land that is buildable? Like, not that people want to hear about the Endenott tree, but that's buildable land at the Endenott tree. And it's already horseshod in. Why aren't we looking at land on higher ground that is dry, has fir trees growing on it that would be more developable? As well, it's quick times. You're not going to be running roads through private drives that are already overran. I just want to know that there's been other areas looked at and that people have actually put boots on the ground to see what the ground is. Because also, that terrain is very steep up there. You showed a road dropping down to the Riverside Drive. For one, we don't want nobody driving through there to represent Brnonia. Two, it drops. I bet that's a 150-foot drop in a matter of 300 feet or so. I mean, we did a hill climb when I was a kid on a four-wheeler. And it wasn't until I was in high school that I could actually make it up the hill because it's so steep. So how are we now saying we're going to put a road there?
So I know a couple of things. The sword property is in the floodway, which FEMA, without a huge amount of environmental and engineering report, won't let anyone build there. The houses on A Street are in the AE zone. So yes, water came up and received it, but it, it is not moving water like a floodway. So, and those are required to be elevated buildings. So you could, at minimum, or at maximum, lose your cars and whatever you stored in the garage should use never expect there, although they tell you not to. When it comes to where the roads are in the grid system, that's just, hey, if you on this piece connect to a road here, here, or here, it's not saying Texas Avenue becomes a road for everyone. It's not even saying that the properties right of basis to Texas could use that as their only infrastructure. So it's not, the road idea is just, hey, this is the grid that exists. Should you want to annex in and you come to us with a developmental plan, we would want it to tie into the already existing infrastructure for streets that we have. So that's what, that's all that means. Doesn't mean that anybody can do it. When it comes to the developmental land and the topography, yes, there's wetlands. We know there's springs everywhere. Weirdly, we're in the, you know, what everyone in Oregon kind of thinks is the close range. There's a ton, ton of water. So that developmental plan would have to encompass, are there wetlands here? They'd have to have a geotech say there's wetlands here. And we wouldn't let someone build there. When, when Peel and all, and Bud Down and all those guys had that 33 acres that's now been sold, that had a road coming down. But that was just in their developmental plan, down to Riverside. And that person, I think they, in that, all of that 33 acres, I think they only had 30, 20-some home sites where it would work for a house to be, where the roads would be, where all that stuff. The, the ground's going to tell you what you can develop there and what you can't. We're not going to let someone put a house on the wetland. Like, just our code won't get it. So I think there's, where there's concern about that, Title IX Code would restrict anybody from kind of way overbuilding in a developmental plan, like putting 50 houses in a parcel that won't, you know, sustain 50 houses. And I understand it's nerve wracking for the property owners, but I think that's really, that would have to be their motivation to have that happen. The city's not interested in annexing anybody unless they want to to develop their property.
So this started, how did this all start and come about? Like, who pushed this motion forward? Because the way you just said it, like, your presentation sounded like it was the county pushing it.
No, so this was a city, so part, you look, they have buildable lands inventory. The state requires you to do that. And it wants you to put, figure out all your property that's residential build, right? And so we have way too much to force anyone to annex in as far as residential build. We know, though, that a lot of it isn't quote unquote buildable because we know there's rain, right? We know there's lots that are really wet. And so maybe you have a house here and a house here, but not a house here. So we know that that inventory is shorter than 20 years. Should it all get built, built out where it can? So our planner at the time was Matt Straight. He was two, two planning firm ago. And his focus has kind of realized, based on this buildable lands inventory, where's our next step? And the next step was starting with just bringing in the boot to urban growth so that those property owners, should they want to, could develop land. And that could count towards residential land to be developed 20 years from now. Doesn't have to, though. So it's just, it was Matt Straight as a city planning, planning commission at the time that we're looking at.
So it's just stuff that's way old, and so we're spending thousands of dollars now on?
We're finally getting it done. So Matt had done a lot of the groundwork and the kind of buildable lands, all that kind of stuff. And then he got hired to be, I forget, a bigger position in Millersburg. So he moved, went to the next planning firm that we have, which is NYG. And they didn't have anyone on staff that could help us with this, but it would already been started, and we didn't want to lose momentum because all the work had been done, and we didn't want the sunset. So we went the point of work, they did have the capability to do it.
This was actually presented to our council in 2019.
Yeah.
Four years ago.
Wanting to do, wanting to do it and keep it going.
And who, and it was that Alex Miller that wanted to do it? I just, I just, it just makes no sense. It seemed like it came out of the blue.
Well, the responsibility.
Usually, there's a push, there's a, there's a gent.
The responsibility of a municipality is to every, have 20 years of inventory. So when we looked at the buildable lands, we knew they're, what they're seeing, the state's seeing is there's 20 years. We know there isn't 20 years. So Matt Straight at the time said, well, you have these parcels like the city's timber, the draws in that, that's not going to make, maybe you get eight homes up there. That's not going to be usable or beneficial to the city. Let's keep it in timber, get it out of the UGB. The only way to do a UGB change to get the inventory as we thought for future needs is by doing this law.
I just think it could be better utilized with a different area.
Thank you, Kim. Any other public testimony?
I'm Paul McIntyre, and I am the owner of Texas Avenue, where it goes from the asphalt to the gravel. I guess.
Just be concise. Just say it.
I didn't know you were here.
This is why I'm here. Just be concise.
So.
Change possibly.
Obviously, you know, we do not want this. I guess I do want to help.
Concise. That was concise. As the property owners of Texas Avenue, changes the city boundary into the county, better known as the boot, glad we all have a nickname now, we are not in favor of annexing in with the city. And that's pretty much the end of the conversation, as I understand it. Because if we do not care to annex into the city, they cannot force us to annex into the city. And that's, that's it for now, I guess. So thank you. You can sit.
And if, if we were to, in what way, it's going to impede all of our properties in one way or another? And, and like you said, a lot of this property is extremely wetland. And, and very, the earth moving that would have to happen just to do a road, it's going to hurt the environment along with the drainage. Right now, the drainage on our property, I feel, is very adequate. The lower end of our property drains directly down into the Halum. And where the Riverside Drive Road, I'm not sure what's going down on there, if there is some sort of culvert or what happens there. Because the, the water that goes down the edge of my property to Riverside somehow makes its way. I know they have the pond there. I'm not sure if that pond is piped to the Halum River. But.
It would be difficult to build in the city area.
And as far as my property, even if I wasn't the owner, to build houses, again, would be very difficult. Obviously, the trees would have to come down, and a lot of earth would need to be moved to physically build a house. And I know the property between me and my neighbor is the same. Very small portion of that would still need to be worked very hard. And, you know, I'm sure the expense would be outrageous to try to put a house in, in between us, so.
Or a road.
Or a road, or, and a house. So again, I'm against it. Again, I'm against it.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else have public testimony?
I'm Scarlett, I'm a property owner up at the end of Texas Avenue. If you spend any time up there, as I've said earlier, we've gone the ground. You'd see that there is a large amount of surface water that runs in that area. Thousands of gallons run through my property every day at the lower field. It runs from Wednesday east, so I think if you're trying to punch a road through there, it'd be a little difficult to deal with that amount of groundwater and the instability in that area. Lot of erosion is constantly happening. I see it taking out off the vegetation, see the vegetation regrowing in separate areas. I see this water track change each year. I've been up there for, coming up nine years. So I've seen it change many times. So I would caution that maybe that area wouldn't be the best for that. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's Scarlett.
Well, Sean Gibson, I'm here tonight as a property owner as well. I am very close to where they want to bring in the urban growth boundary. And so my numbers are a little bit different because I'm not a property owner. So the numbers I came up with and my concerns are more for the future development side of it. Based on the properties that are there right now, if you just minimize where your house is located and, and put you on that one acre parcel, there is a potential there for 33.8 acres of development. Sign on C, boots not on the ground, we know what it's like, but nobody's walked it, they have no idea. If an outside source is looking strictly at those numbers, and if you go by a city lot, 5,000 square foot lot, you are looking at potentially 270 to 300 homes on those 33.8 acres. I'm brought up our, our water curtailments consistently from 2019. The number of days that we've been on restriction, whether it has been voluntary or different levels of mandatory, have consistently gone up. In 2019, I don't have an exact number because we didn't have that printed out. At minimum, there were 26 days. 2020, 38 days of water curtailment. 46 days in '21, 55 days last year. Consistently going up without our growing already. We haven't been able to maintain the current, the current population, which has also gone up a little bit. It's not a neutral, anywhere between 1% to 3% per year. But I just think it's a bad idea. And I also agree, there are homes up there on septic. They have been committed by the county, so there's no, no secrets, no hiding, no secret structure. And I, as we sit now, our infrastructure can't handle it. And so what does that mean to the rest of us, the rest of the city? How is that going to impact our water bill, our electric bill, our property taxes? Some say, "Well, it's just going to be your property owners." Well, if you want to annex in, then you've got to do all of your own infrastructure. But it's not just going to be you, it's going to be all of us. So I feel it's fair, I feel it's fair to fight it. Not too much.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else?
Say one more thing?
Sure.
No, no, he's good. He can go first.
Yeah.
Gary Meyer, 955 Texas Avenue. When this all started, you guys sent out a questionnaire, whether we wanted to or didn't want to have it. Can anybody here tell me how many were sent out and what the consensus was?
I don't remember how many.
It wasn't my baby.
Trying to think. I don't know how many were sent out, Gary. I know it wasn't an actual vote, it was a survey.
Correct.
I have to go pull it up, like, go sit at my computer and search for it.
Well, I could tell you, all but, all but maybe one or two were in favor of it. And I would call them in favor because they were a no vote in the form of, they just didn't vote. Because we had a meeting at my house, and everybody had that land, but lived up there, and they were not for it, you know? She talked about the sewer, I'm one of them. The county just put in a new, we just put in a new septic system. My neighbor up the way has one too. You know, that, that's, you know, a costly way to go on incur. I agree highly with what she has to say, if there is other land out there. And I don't think this wasn't in intention or looked at until the school went in. You know, I understand we're an island, you don't want that. Well, you know, it's our land, and, you know, the survey thing, I think, was just to see what your battle was, you know? And consensus is, we don't want it, but Kimberly's got a very point. There's Knott Street, it's on a hill. There's many others under there, the ones she talked about. You know, we're up Knott Street, there's no truth, you know? There's quite a bit more land. It is, it's nasty. We had to dig dishes to get a water runoff, I watched it go down the school. I watched when they built that place, that 30-inch court down there, dump groundwater into the, into the river. If it wasn't for the school, Logan's, I'd have shut that down in a heartbeat, you know? So that's what my concerns is, how long sewer, what's going to happen to me?
Well, as long as your septic's good, nothing. Because it's only when your septic fails and you're within 300 feet.
Well, we just rebuilt it.
So it seems like good.
That's my big question.
Yeah.
You know, it's one of them. We do have city water, not city sewer. We do have a problem with the road, back when the school buses were going up down shaking and vibrating, we had three pipes breaking one time. I talked to Jeff, that repaired it down at the end of my driveway twice, one section apart. He said, "Well, it's not the right pipe," and isn't, it's two inch. You know, so that, all that infrastructure had to be redone.
Yeah.
Which it just seemed, and also got one thing off your side here, that you guys actually, and I don't, I don't understand it, I haven't seen anybody bring it up, but you guys just updated this on the first of February, the middle of February. But on here, you have an extension of Texas Avenue to Mellinger Road.
Wait, I don't even know what you're looking at, Gary.
This is right off your Veronia TSP update, it was that date on February. And it talks about putting through, putting the road through from Texas to Mellinger Road. And project gives approximately $1.45 million to project would locate outside of the city urban growth boundary.
Yeah, so that, that's a TSP, that's a transportation systems plan.
Was it just by the county then?
No, so transportation systems, any plan that the city does, like the water master plan, that's forward idea of projects and estimates for what they could cost. That is not a list that we're going to do it, that's a, these are the next, could be the next 15 years worth of things, right? So one of the things in the water plant is a new recipe, like Kim was talking about. That's going to take money, spot, all the things, right? So it's just forward looking for what could happen in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's my only opinion. Kimberly's got some great points here. There is other land. I just think you guys don't want that little area in there that's, you know, outside of it. Because I do have several acres that is the timber forest land. Am I going to lose that?
No.
Okay.
This is just closing the UGB. You're not in the city limits, you have your same county designation. You can still shoot guns, ride quads, all the things you can do as a county rep, you're still in the county.
Well, I think that's our biggest concern because we didn't understand it. That is, that is all that my favorites, they like that.
If you live there for the next 80 years and never change a thing, we can't make you.
Great. Super. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Kim?
I hate to be the dead horse about the sewer because I'm on the other end of town on this. I'm tired of smelling the sewer overflowing in front of my house, and in the summer times, all that kind of stuff. But we all know that I volunteer my time at another location in town. And just last week, it overflowed in the bays of the fire station, and we had to leave the station, and we had to open the bay doors, had to have a plumber come in, all the things. The people misunderstood, some new people at the station thought that we were on a septic tank, and so they thought it was our deal. It's actually a pump station, not a septic tank. Whole mess of things, but I know it's rainwater that's overflowing it. But until we can stop getting our sewer back flowing into people's homes and to our fire station, which say it floods, that's where everyone needs to go and stay on cops. There's a reason we have 500 cops stored there, so people would stay there. I would hope they wouldn't have to put rubber boots on and fledge through feces to get to their man, dry, safe place in the event of a natural emergency. We haven't had to do that before in '96, '07, the scare in 2015. But I guarantee you, we flood again, we're getting sewage in the station again. It just happened less than a week ago. I guess it's been a week and a day. Don't have it again. So until we can get that under the boot, I don't think we should be talking about any growth of any kind. We shouldn't be issuing any new building permits, any new, anything that adds to it, to the sewer system, period end of story, until we can keep it out of people's tongues and out of this system.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else?
My name is Greg Grenorden, I live on Mellinger on City Problem. I've only been in Veronia for five and a half years, so I'm a comparative newcomer here. It would appear that if development, if this goes through and homes are building this area, it's going to be very, very expensive. The infrastructure for it is going to be very, very expensive. I'm very close to Louisiana Avenue, where 14 new homes have just gone in. More new homes are planned to go in. The infrastructure, quite frankly, is terrible. The road is like something out of a third world. We have tremendous problems with water runoff. And I'm wondering if this does go through, how is the city going to support the infrastructure? What guarantees do the citizens have your proper infrastructure is going to be built, rather than just developers coming in, putting homes in, making their money, and leaving the area? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Vicious, I know.
Well, third time's the charm, that's it.
On this note, in all honesty, I drive an ambulance. And we had a call at Mellinger, it was in trailer park when I was a kid. You cannot get a fire truck up there, you cannot get an ambulance up there. Those roads are also not on map. So those roads are built, promises were made, there's no actual infrastructure. But the gravel roads to get to those new homes are not accessible for first responders. Those rigs cannot go, they sink, the ambulance, you literally feel it sinking, we have to put it in four-wheel drive, and we can't get some of those homes up there. We can only make it maybe halfway up that hill in the ambulance. So if you live out there and we got 31 instructor, it's not, not cool. It's not fun for us. I mean, it's a YouTube sensation when first responders drop someone on a stretcher and then they have to pick it up, and then we get destroyed day in and day out. But that wouldn't be on us, we would take the heat for it. But that was exactly what you said, developers coming in, making their money, skipping town. Promises were made, it never got dealt with, done deal. Other thing with all that development up there is, and I know I've asked some questions, so that please don't take this as a personal attack, about Louisiana and it getting punched through. It needs to happen because on the first responder side of things, Metro Westy Ambulance Company is based out of Phil's Drive. Yeah, they got their issues going on, but we don't have all local people that are responding to our homes. And multiple times, like, I've been in there when we're trying to train new people, and it's embarrassing for people from the city to come out here and drive country roads, they don't get it. They input stuff. I can't tell you how many times we've been on a Code 3 response, and we get to the end of Louisiana because I can't, you have to let them try to trial in here, and guess what? Now we're backing down, over, backing down, I forget which it is, there at the bottom of State Street, the Hill, because the maps don't show those roads, that's not through access. And that just delays first responders' responses. The fact that we can't go from the station straight up to Louisiana to all those homes is an absolute joke because a matter of minutes is life and death. Does anyone know the success rate of CPR and how long it's done, chances of being survival? CPR isn't done within the first three minutes, stay of survival is slim, and now within seven minutes, probably not going to happen. You're going to be a vegetable. Sometimes those responses, because we have five minutes to get out the door, so I have five minutes to leave my house, get to the station, and then from there, we've got to get there. So the fact that we can't just go right up Louisiana, we have to go and then, not only does it take longer, anytime we drive Code 3, we have to think to ourselves, is this person's life worth endangering all of these other people's lives on our way to it? We have the basketball courts going on, the kids on their scooter, State Street's not very wide, there's always rigs parked there. So is it safe for us to say, "Yeah, we're going to beat, beat Code 3 down to the end of Mellinger for one person's life, but we're going to expose 16 kids' lives along the way?" We have to make those calls, and that sucks every day, getting in the ambulance to say, "Hey, am I going to put practice family's life on the line? Or am I going to put all the kids at the court or along State Street?" And then you got babysitters down there, you got dogs, all that fun stuff, so that's something else to think about. Until we can get those roads done and safe, done safely and punched through, we, yeah, again, shouldn't be thinking about it. But it's another aspect to think about when we grow our town.
Okay, thank you. Any other public testimony or comments? If not, I'll turn it back over to Jeff, the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. We will now close the public hearing at 8:09.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony, and we will now close the public hearing at 8:09.
All right, back to me. Planning commissioners, do you have any other questions for staff or wish, do you present any thoughts?
I've lived for 40 years, a real estate agent. And automatically you think, oh gosh, he's after to sell some homes out there. I also caught ecology, and I read a lot about architecture, I believe firm land. Quality life for everybody is think is the goal of every city or should be. And I've complained more often than, I think, two years ago, I was saying, "Why are you tearing trees down or Bumire Park?" I didn't know what that one. But there was an idea that lots would be sold up on the top of the hill there, revenue for the city. And I've always felt a city that sells its assets is like selling its soul. Veronia can hardly keep up with the parts that are here, and someday they're going to be needed. So I came in and complained, said, "Don't do that." I live here first, my livelihood is second. And I, I remember when we first got that 32 acres that Bud Dow had, I had a, I was a listing agent, had a call from one of the developers and banks that did that development there. And they said, "Do you think we can make lots, 2,500 square foot, and put in mobile homes?" I said, "I don't know where that place is," even though I was a listing agent. Because again, I believe in quality, and we do need an area for development. We're lucky to have so much forest around us to grant that common growth. You know, I lived in an area, I taught in an area, they caught a full page in Newsweek magazine. The worst developed part of, in the United States. As a kid, it was a canyon, I hadn't seen it in years. Got up on my motorbike, Endural, there's an eight-lane freeway dividing the community. It was San Diego, even though it was 20 miles away from San Diego because there was a border that went through the bay. San Diego police chose us to schools, send a siege drill, fire department, it was a mess. And I'm always attracted, I used to take my son to the Runcor Station because that's a noted development on how to make people live happily and, and a good life to live. He liked it because he thought he got more candy. You know, the neighborhood store, there's a lot of thought... candy. You know, the neighborhood store, there's a lot of thought. There goes an architecture and I admire architectures that try to do their best to make people happy in where they live. And that is always a challenge because we get more people. The land stays the same amount. So it is a very challenging role. And I'm glad to see this many people care about where they live and what they want. That's encouraging. It's like teaching and having parents come in and identification that they care about their kids. That was always encouraging. So I think the amount of people who came for this, and I think that what Vernonia, being a small community, cares about its people. I see that over and over. So I'm not too frightened, but you know, I'll keep on my guard.
Thank you, Steve. So what's the criteria for like water curtailment? How do you guys decide, you know? I've heard that come up a couple of times.
So we have a couple of water rights in the city and an impound met right. So I believe we have 2.2 cubic feet per second that we can pull from the Rock Creek. 2.32. I knew someone, I didn't deal with that. So the tricky part is water curtailment really has little to do with what we're consuming. It has to do with what the river is providing for the wildlife. So when we have 2.2, if the cubic feet per second goes under a threshold, then it doesn't even matter that we still have our 2.2 and we're not drawing that. The state says at this level, at 14 cubic feet per second, even with your water right, you have to be voluntary. At 12 cubic feet per second in the Rock Creek, you have to go into even odd watering rates or restrict that it's for humans, not for cars or lawns or things like that. Unless lawns are for safety like sports fields. So it's 14, 12, 10, and eight is the most severe we've had. And that is the restriction to only use water in your homes for cooking, cleaning yourself, cleaning your homes, no outside watering. So that's a state requirement that anyone that has a water right on the Rock Creek is also under about the same stipulations as the cubic feet per second go lower in the summer season.
So if this is already a problem, then now I'm hearing, you know, we have this 20-year kind of outlook for whatever the growth may be. How do you account for 20 years of growth without being able to supply more water to that? Because if it's controlled by the state, how do you have any, you know, how can you say there's going to be more water for this?
We never really have water to support the people. We just sometimes have to restrict what the people can do with their water. There's never going to be a restriction to eating, drinking, cleaning yourself. That's not really a restriction, right? I mean, it's in the code in case, you know, climate change goes really south and you had to do that. But we've never had to restrict people's gallons that they use in their homes. It's just been, you can't wash your car. You can't power wash. You can't water cars that aren't food producing, things that like that. There's never really been a restriction of like that people can survive on the water we can let. It's more the task at hand.
So I have one more question. So, and this is particular to Gary here, what he was talking about earlier. So how can he, a guy like, say, Gary, who wants to remain on his property, and let's say this whole urban growth boundary thing goes through and whatnot, even though they're not wanting to be annexed in it. But let's say, you know, we're all gone, everybody here, and then there's a new bunch of people in, but he's still on his property. Who's to say these next bunch of people don't vote him out and say, you know, this property has already been kind of decided. Now we're just going to force you to annex and do whatever, you know?
Yeah, so an annexation-
How can that be, how can we reassure these guys?
An annexation of a not willing participant is the method in which Jesse spoke to. You'd have to, the city would have to vote.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. I mean, it seems like probably-
Like every city, it has to be, it's like eminent domain. You're taking someone's property they don't want you to have. It'd be that big. It wouldn't be somebody sitting on council or even someone in my position is making Gary do something he doesn't want to do. It's an actual huge deal before anyone.
So I really appreciated everybody that spoke up today because it gave me a better understanding of what some of the issues are here. Unrelated to the subject that we're all here about tonight, it looks like we need to address issues related to a new water reservoir?
Well, that's in the water master plan. That's in development.
Okay. But that was mentioned here. And that seemed to be one of the issues that was identified that I didn't really see connected to this, but it was an imperative. The other thing was the sewer, you know? Another thing that is not really addressed by this particular issue, but is imperative. And further, if you were going to do, you know, the annexation, if somebody wanted to do development, then those issues, all these issues, including that the road improvement, would all be addressed at that point, but not by this particular thing that I could see. That this, none of this, tonight is affected by that. How much does it cost to develop a piece of property here? I'm just curious. So say that this actually happened tonight, it was approved. And then somebody comes along and they have, you know, and I know Skylar because I've been walking around their property, and they want to actually put a couple of houses on there. What does it cost if somebody came in and wanted to develop that? What is the actual cost? For getting permits, you know, to, what would it be? Any idea?
Expensive.
So they'd have, can I speak a little bit? They'd have to do the application fee, which would be the cheapest part. They'd have to hire engineers, architects, planners, agents through the state. It'd be very expensive.
Very expensive.
I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out.
Okay. So we're not talking about-
Over $100,000, easy.
Over what?
Over $100,000, easy.
So they just couldn't come in tomorrow and say, we want to annex and here's my 50 bucks and I'm paying for a permit and I want you to put a road in here and do this and all that.
And further, if they had a house there, they'd have to connect to city infrastructure. So they'd have to put in new mains. If they want to subdivide, they have to put roads, which have to be paved, sidewalk, curb, gutter. There's even stricter requirements because it'd be a subdivision.
Okay.
So it's not something-
It's like people, two generations from now, they want to sell all that property because they're moving, whether it's snow cleared or they passed on. And that's the option that's available by being in the UGB is that annexation option. The UGB is just the dash lines that just says, this is also potential residential area. That's all it is.
And what you've, related to that, what you were talking about in terms of these roads that are not accessible on these new developments?
Well, no, it's Louisiana. So Louisiana upwards Melanger only came to a certain point. And Louisiana South coming up from Highway 47 only comes to a certain point. There's a stand of timber in between them. So what the council approved through ARPA money was to do a connection project, which means, and that's just being designed right now. And that means that the tree, standard trees will be lost, the roads will be put in where there isn't one that exists. The road base and infrastructure from both will have to be to a certain standard, and then it would be resurfaced with asphalt. And that's part of what the council's doing with their ARPA money that they have for that project.
So it would seem to me that some of these issues that you're talking about could be addressed by increasing development costs or oversight or something of these new developments that are coming in. And you also brought up about, it was a lot of wetlands. Well, I just moved from a place that gets 17 inches of rain a year. And so to me, the entire community is wet. But I also did flood relief out here. I worked after the floods because I lived around this side of the mountain. And when you're talking about walking around in the water, I live at the end of Knott Street, you know that? And I sink down every step I take outside my house. And I'm thinking, is it, and I looked at the property next to Skylar because I was actually looking at building a place there before I bought the place at the end of Knott to put a house on there. And it doesn't seem any worse there than the place that I already live in. So I, you know, for me, it's kind of difficult to ascertain. Now, it seems like if they're going to do some development, all of those things will be taken into consideration, right? At that point. This is only meeting the requirement that you had initially started this whole process, right? Okay. And I understand working with the state, how difficult it is to bring land adjustments in. Back in the seventies, before you were probably born, they put in some very strict guidelines on, you know, what can be developed in the city. And yes, so when I'm looking at this, I'm trying to look at, is there reasons really not to bring in something that's so noticeable in the middle to the urban? The other thing is, was there anybody that brought up anything about why we wouldn't want it to exchange for those properties? Because I didn't hear that. I only heard why not to develop on Texas. Is there something else about the exchange, property exchanges at any?
They're not buildable.
They're not buildable?
They're not buildable because they're wet and they're steep.
The ones that we-
Inaccess for tying into the infrastructure would be horrible.
So that's in supportive, then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Reasons why they don't want it in the urban growth is because it's not really buildable, but you're not doing a good trade. Or the South, the South's already built out in addition to topography. The current county zone only allows for what those towns that are there.
Plus, like the Nahalum section would require a pump and stuff for the store and stuff.
It would require no ride.
It would be a lot more infrastructure expense than going up there.
And on the road, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk or not, but the accessibility for those roads, it's like, good call on J Street, we can't fit the ambulance down J Street. It's not light enough. Those other two gravel roads, H and I, same thing, too narrow. The gravel, you get two rig parks on either side, we can't fit down them. And then where the old trailer park was, what's that? E, I don't know, needs to have streets on those. It's too steep and too narrow and the gravel's too loose. All we do is sit there and go, huh, huh, huh. So it needs to be paved. The work concrete is in, you can't get a rig up there. So they're inaccessible as in they're not, it's no better than, I mean, we'd have better success on the logging road than with those roads.
Okay. I want to write this in. So you have anything else?
That was it.
Okay. So I want to simplify this a little bit because we need to go back to what their original intention is here. It's that, I don't know if mandated is the right word here, but we're mandated, and if she can correct if that's not the right word, but by the state, to have property to expand on. Doesn't matter whether the city is ready for the infrastructure or not. It's land that could be built on. And there's more land that could be built on in this trade than the land that they currently have on their urban growth boundary. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Just because you're in the urban growth boundary does not mean you have any restrictions on your property. You'll be able to do, like she said, everything that you can currently do because you're still under county rule as far as land building. So the only time, I mean, the only thing it is, is a benefit for you to sell your property later or your heirs take it over and want to subdivide it and annex in. But you're not being forced to annex in. It's just a benefit actually that you have, that you could be able to attach yourself to city infrastructure eventually. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything.
So do you, do you ever have the option to say, we're fine the way we are. We're not going to grow anymore. We just want to improve our city? You know, like the stuff she talked about with the roads? No. You have to come up with some plan all the time?
Yeah. So, yeah, you have to keep, all those plans have to stay current. The other reason we want all those plans to stay current for your buildable lands, water master plan, all of that, is because having a current plan ties you into being able to get state and federal funding for those purposes. If you have no plan in place, they're not going to give us any money to upgrade sewer. And we're currently upgrading staff for KIM, but it hasn't, it's being designed right now. It's going to be whole plane construction. I'm done. I'm going to find my friend with the same energy grant for the sewer problems on KIMs. But I wanted to say one thing. The boot site, that sewer would go into Pump Station Three, which is currently downright by the lake parking lot. And that is currently underutilized, right? It was overbuilt at the time we put it in because we knew potentially Louisiana, potentially the boot would come in. And it was called the boot. That's not a nickname we made up. That's what it was called. And we're looking at sites for the school site. Because of the shape that existed with the blue part, it did look like a boot. And so those plans are kind of required for you to access the funding that a small community like ours would need to get from the state of vets. Otherwise, it's out of all of our, just our pockets, which very little can be done with the amount of money we bring in collectively of us. If that makes sense.
Any other thoughts? Well, thank you, commissioners. At this time, I will entertain a motion to either approve this plan as presented, or if you want to make any amendments, or deny it.
I made the motion to approve. Then, amend?
Sorry. It'd be technically-
We approve a recommendation to the council.
Recommend approval.
Any seconds?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'll be there.
One opposed?
Okay. Thank you, planning commissioner. Counselors, do any of you have any questions for staff or wish to present any thoughts on the agenda item?
Any thoughts?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Neil.
I keep hearing the water issue. I'm front and center on the water issue, on the city's ordinance, how it reads. I was co-author on it, so you can blame me. The city is never in danger of not supplying water to the residences. That's not what the water curtailment is about. We basically run one shift making water a day, usually not seven days a week. Maybe only in the summer do they run. You got two more shifts you could run to max out our water plant. And that probably wouldn't max out what our water right is. So it's not a question of being able to supply you water to your residences. It's a question of should you be washing your concrete apron or cars when the aquatic life in the river is suffering? That is the question. And that is what city fathers, before I was up here, made that decision that yes, we should do something. And we are mandated by the state to have a curtailment program. So it's open to amendments. If citizens want to change it, you can come down here and raise a ruckus and we can amend it. But I don't think we've ever went below eight. We've never been, might have just touched below 10 CFS occasionally. And usually it was so short, we could hardly notice it before we were back out of it. So as far as the water, you know, rest assured, it's not an issue for us to supply water to the people. The recent sewer upgrades, actually, I think the sewer facilities still got quite a bit of capacity. We've got rid of our biggest hurdle was summer, during the summer discharge period, we used to have to hold through the summer because it wouldn't, couldn't discharge the river. Now we got the hybrid discharge trenches. We can discharge in the summer. And that's no longer an issue. We do have some eye-to-eye issues. Might have been- We do have some I and I issues, might have been what happened to the fire station, I don't know, because that all goes to Pump Station 3, and that's our newest, latest, and greatest.
I think it's their pump station that...
Oh, they have their own pump?
Right outside, yeah, it's right outside. And that's where, because we checked out the manholes and none of them were over full.
Oh, okay. Put something on them.
So I think what it was is a deluge of I and I giving in, and then it just backed their sewer up. But somewhere in the addition is what I, when I talked to Rob, he was thinking, somewhere in the addition, and we don't have plans for that. So that was kind of where we can't figure out.
Like we've got stormwater going in or sewer?
Somehow there's a little...
There might have been a fine for us.
Yeah.
So we've been working on this for quite a while. Some of our lands, you know, we also pulled back, we used to give water outside of the city limits. We have curtailed that because it's no benefit to the city to, to encourage growth outside the city limits, we get no tax revenues. And so the taxpayers within the city, with all the extra demand, they're footing the bill. Excuse me, this cough has been killing me. So we have to have lands that we can, in the future, bring in to the city. We had some parcels here that basically got landlocked on us, which, and we can't force those people in to annex in because there's a roadblock there. Or be in extreme process, and I don't think anybody on council had the stomach to do that. I don't foresee that in the future. We have to have some areas for future growth. I grew up walking on that land up there. Yeah, there's some wet areas in there. I slid, I slid it down the McIntyre's Hill in the snow. It is steep, not as steep, probably not any steeper than the Halem, and we build up there. Building is manageable. Yeah, there'd probably be some places we can, so. I just think, you know, and being, tying in, all of our services surround that. And I think that was a selling point that they came up with through their process, Winterbrook, that it's, it's the logical spot. Is it perfect? No. They also did model some of the other areas, even when people talked about NOCs, we talked about NOCs. Kind of limited up on top, that would definitely spur bringing in another water reservoir immediately. And whether or not we could tag that solely on to the developer or not might be in question. So then, again, the rate pairs in Vernonia would get saddled for a development cost, potentially. So that's probably not a great idea. There's no way to loop the water up there, it'd be a single in and out, that's not good. You know, just in the other areas, just don't, south of town just doesn't make sense in the flood plain area, so everybody, you're going to do a development and everybody's going to have raised houses, that's not going to fly. So I just, I think it's a logical choice. I know people have concerns, I mean, it's affecting your land, but we're not forcing anybody to do anything, and quite frankly, it's increasing the value of your land, obviously significantly, I would think. I'm not a Realtor, I can't pass judgment on, but I know in the future, it's going to be the person that's holding those type of lands is holding out that that land value is going to go through the roof. And Vernonia's been lucky, we haven't been growing very fast, about 3%. And yeah, I don't think any of us would like to see a bank's development come in here, but it would have to be somebody with some awful deep pockets to do that. And some landowners would probably get pretty rich in the deal, so. We're not foreseeing that, that isn't our goal. It's just cleaning up what we have and where it makes sense to allow more growth.
Thank you, Dale. Yeah, I'd like to say a few things, like reiterate what Steve said, it's really good to see citizens here participate tonight. I moved here almost 50 years ago. I came out to visit my uncle Doc Hobart, who was a doctor at the time. And when I arrived in 1973, there were 1,800 people in Vernonia. Now there's a little over 2,300 people. So it hasn't grown that much over 50 years, but it has grown. We are growing a little bit, like Dale said. There's three of us sitting up here tonight that have been working on this for the last four years, looking at the map and talking, we've had several workshops in 2019 with Matt Straight, our city planner, and a lot of work has been in to get to this point where we're sitting at tonight, a lot of work, a lot of study. I'd like to thank Wintergreen for their participation and following up and getting us to this point So I read through the staff report again, pretty much in detail. I think it makes a lot of sense to me. A couple of good things that I talked about earlier, diverting the wastewater that's coming off that boot down in a new line, down in the Halem, that's going to really help a lot. Sounds like there's about 10 acres out of the 48 in the boot that are wetlands. So according to Sean's stats, on about 30 acres, 30 some acres buildable in the boot. I think it makes good sense for the future of Vernonia. We are going to grow a little bit, again, I'm pretty sure, so. A lot of study's been done at feasibility, the utilities, and the boot, you know, B2 just makes a lot more sense than A1 or A2, so I'm in favor of it personally.
I agree a lot with, is it Joan? Your sign's like, just... I agree with what Joan said, that we do appreciate all the input, and it does bring up a lot of concerns. And I don't feel that they are as directly relevant to the UGB as they seem. And every single one of them that I heard tonight are things that are already in the process of being addressed to some level. So they're things we're aware of because people come out to tell us, and we can do things about them. And to me, it's, we don't, we don't have a choice to say, no, you can't build anywhere else, you know, that's not allowed. And so, again, while it's not ideal, it has to be somewhere. I grew up in South Florida, so I can attest that with enough money, you can in fact build an entire state on a ground level water table. But, and also, I think it was interesting to me, I heard kind of almost conflicting sides, which is that it's not buildable, you're not going to get enough development on it, and then the city is not set up for more development. And so to me, you don't, you can't say, oh, we are not going to allow any development until we figure out all of the infrastructure, because those things are already in process. And again, to get funding, we have to be in compliance, and to be in compliance, we have to say, you are allowed to build somewhere. And so I agree that it's not perfect, but all things considered, it is logical.
Thank you, Shree.
Anyone else?
I'll speak up, Rick. We are looking at putting the road in, which will help, and there is going to be water and sewer updates on Louisiana. When we go to put that road in, we've planned ahead to do the infrastructure before going the road, so we don't have to tear the road back up to redo the infrastructure. And I know people are not going to like it, but the hookup fees are probably going to increase, help offset the rising cost of everything, that we're not charging enough for your hookup for water and sewer. So that will help with some of the upgrading. And the building permit's going to be going up too, because we're nowhere close to what out of town is. So there's a lot that's going to happen. We're going to try to help take the burden off the direct citizens.
I just want to ask him, which road are you putting through? Because you didn't specify Louisiana. I just want, I just want to make it clear, because we talked about a lot of roads, so...
The map shows all kinds, but the one I'm directly talking about is Louisiana, which is already a city street.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'm trying really hard because I can go off on many trails, so I'm going to try to keep this very concise. I appreciate all the explanations from staff. I hope they were able to answer any questions or misconceptions or understandings you all may have had regarding what this really means. You know, there's no forcing anybody to sell or become a, you know, annex into the city here. That's what, I think I just really want to emphasize, is that it's a, it's just future forward thinking. Do we really think that we're going to have another 500 houses built here in the very next, you know, 10, 15 years? I don't think so. I hope not, personally. I think growth is very important, and respectful and planned growth is critical. And I think this is just one way that we're going to be able to manage that in a responsible manner. And I appreciate all the work everyone has done on this and, and your input. I mean, I, I agree with everyone else who said it makes us think about things that we may not have been able to, on our own, come up with, because you live it. I live on Alder, and it's like, you know, that's all my world is. So thank you all, I appreciate that. And if you have questions, I'm sure that staff and Ken and the Planning Commission, because they're very well-versed in this, can answer for you. And I hope your questions and concerns were answered tonight.
Thank you, Counselors. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move. Suppose you want a whole sentence?
No. Maybe a little bit more.
You have a proposed, do we have a proposed motion?
I want to stop the part. I think it's inside the first page.
Would this?
I couldn't find it. All right. I get it? Yeah. I move. No, I don't. I, I can't put this one together. I move to accept the recommendations from the Commission to adjust the Vernonia urban growth boundary to include the boot area with the residential plan designation and remove the Nahalem Highway area, the sword property and timber property from the urban growth boundary. And include a policy, is that part of the motion as well? Thank you. Include a policy for areas within the boot to be zoned residential upon annexation to the city, and a policy for the extension of the existing street grid system. Do we need to add anything in about the Halem? Or is that incorporated into this?
I think that's in the application that they can.
Okay.
All right.
Very well-put motion, Counselor.
Yeah, I read it. Thank you for wrote it.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Ash. Will you call a roll for Stephanie?
Ms. Hobart?
Aye.
Elsewhere Walker?
Aye.
Elsewhere Ash?
Aye.
Elsewhere Webb?
Aye.
Elsewhere Norman?
Must be the left seat.
Again, thank you for attending the public hearing, and I will close this council meeting at 8:47. Meeting adjourned.